Make your way to your seat and we'll get started.
I just saw the email.
Okay.
This is a bomb, I just saw. Yes, sir.
All right, board members, it is two o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Granville County Board of Education a work session in order. We do have a quorum, we have five, six members present. Ms. LeBrec will not be with us today. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Houlihan if you would open us some indication.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings we all have. We thank you for all that you do for the people, the children, and everyone else in Granville County. Please help us to make the right decisions, to have a good discussion, to move forward with the requirements and responsibilities of this board. And we thank you very much for once again, all that you do. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Dr. Houlihan. Ms. Anderson, will you lead our pledge?
Yes, please, let's stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people, which stands on our nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here today. As you remember, there is just two main items on our agenda, and we did add a third item at the request of several of our community members concerning field trip chaperones and volunteers. I'd like to start with just bringing two items to your attention from my report. You should have received an email from our School Board Association related to our regional spring meeting. That is April 27th, held at High Point University, will be in the afternoon from one to five. We generally try to make a good showing of the board going together. It is a training opportunity. So as you take a look at that email, if you will let Austin know if you're available, so that we can register for that and get ready for it. Also, if you remember, you approved for us to establish a Board of Education Policy Committee. We asked you to be thinking about that, and one of our requests was that we had one person from each of our standing board committees. That would be academics, finance, and operation to volunteer for that. And so I'd like to open up now if anyone would like to volunteer for one of those committees to be on that policy committee.
I'll volunteer.
For which committee are you?
Academic, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have Dr. McKnight for academic. Do we have someone for finance?
I believe Ms. LeBrec volunteered.
I don't know that we can do the Baptist way of volunteering, but aren't you? Were you about to say something between?
I will, it's your mom.
Okay, all right. And do we have someone from operations?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Peace. All right, so board, this comes to you. If I can, I'd entertain a motion that we appoint Dr. McKnight for the academic team, Williams for finance, and Peace for operations. Do we have a motion for that? We have a motion by Dr. McKnight and a second by Mr. Peace. Is there any further discussion? All right, see you none if you're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, and so we will reach out to those three as we form that committee and begin that work. At this time, do we have any other reports from other board members? All right, Dr. McLean?
Thank you so very much, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to all of our board members and guests watching this afternoon. What a busy month it has been. We've had tons of excitement all across our district. We've had all sorts of wonderful initiatives take place, and they are still underway. From spelling bees and book fairs to our latest State of the Schools address, let me say thank you and that Granville County Public Schools is still on the move. On this upcoming Friday, I'm thrilled to announce we will host our very first Superintendent's Leadership Summit for students. And I'm excited we will have students representing all of our middle and high schools. Eighteen youngsters will be exposed to leaders in and outside of our district and outside of Granville County. It is going to be incredible. Board members, in your folders this afternoon, you will find some information you might find helpful as you prepare for your session. Of course, it is just simply suggested material and not required for your work with the students. Feel free to use it if you would like. Today's work on the budget is part of the process for our district moving forward. We will take time to better understand the roles and responsibilities as well as the needs for our district. I would like to welcome to us, Mr. Hank, with us, Mr. Hank Hurd, and we have Mr. Ricky Lopes with us this afternoon. So thank you to both of you representing the Hill Group. After that, we will engage in important academic work around walkthroughs that occur frequently in our district. So we're pleased for that exposure this afternoon. At this point in the year, our staff is working hard to remain focused on the process of teaching and learning, and to remove all other distractions where possible. I would like to thank everyone for joining us today. And, Mr. Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Do you have any questions for the Superintendent? All right, see you none. We'll begin with our first item today during our work session, our budget work. We would like to recognize Mr. Hank Hurd and Mr. Ricky Lopes if you'll come and present to us today.
Good afternoon. I thank you once again for having us, and we enjoy working with the district, and Vicky and the staff are doing a great job, and we appreciate all their help. And so today, we just want to get started with what the budget process is. We're not going to spend a lot of time on the processes as much as we are on some of the drivers that are going to affect the budget this year that you'll need to take into consideration. If you can go to the next slide, please. So, once again, we'll spend just a minute on the process, but we're going to talk about the impact of charter schools on your budget, and the things that are going to have a big impact dollar-wise, not only on this year's budget, but on budgets in the future. So by law, there has to be a budget that goes to the county commissioners no later than May 15th, or whatever dates agreed upon between the county commissioners and the Board of Education. So that means sometime between now and that date, a budget needs to be approved by the board that goes to the county commissioners for consideration. And so part of that process, once again, is determining what you want to include or exclude, as the case may be, from the budget that the board approves sometime between now and May 15th. The budget resolution itself is usually done in the fall or late summer, depending on when the state approves the budget. Technically, you can do a budget resolution before then, but some folks like to wait until they know what the state dollars are going to be. So historically, I think your budget resolution has probably been done in the fall or late fall, in some cases, depending on when the state gets finished. This is definitely a work in process, or when we get to the, some of the drivers in the budget, you'll see that we don't have specific dollars associated with it yet, but we do know they're going to be large numbers. And so that's why we want to bring it to your attention as early as possible, so there's some things that you can consider as you're trying to develop the budget for the upcoming year. We did get some information Friday afternoon on ADM. We'll talk about that in just a minute. But as far as actual allotments, it'll be at least a couple more weeks before the state sends out preliminary allotments. But I think we know enough to be able to talk about some of these things, but we just don't have the specific numbers yet. From a local standpoint, the county commissioners have control, so to speak, over how much they give you for local current expense and for capital outlay. The others are driven by the state, but they're approved as part of your budget process, your state and federal funds. And one of the things we have to remember as we're looking at the budget for the next couple of years is the impact that the ESTR funds have on your budget. Those are one-time funds that you have to be careful not to use those for continuation items. But they can help maybe fill in some gaps as you're waiting to get more funds, or whatever the case may be. But the ESTR funds kind of distort the impact of the state and local funds as far as the total budget's concerned. Those ESTR funds are making up a larger percentage of your budget, but once again, in two years, those are going to go away. So it's very important that you plan carefully how you're going to spend those funds and kind of an exit plan, so to speak, once those ESTR funds are no longer available. There's two types of requests to the county. There's a continuation request, how much does it cost to keep doing what we're doing, and the expansion request, what are the new items that we want to bring to your attention? For example, if you wanted to add a position or whatever for a particular department or a function or whatever, that would be an expansion. Continuation requests would be utilities, you know, your utility company says they're going to increase the utilities by five percent. Well, to keep the lights on, we're going to have to have five percent more for utilities just to keep going. So typically, your budget is broken down into those two types of requests, continuation and expansion. The county manager, once he gets your requested budget, of course, he'll take that to his board, and once again, he'll include the expansion items in his particular request that he takes to the county commissioners. Now, sometimes there's a fine line between what's a continuation and what's an expansion. Today, when we talk about the impact of salaries based on state action, technically, it may be a continuation because it's to keep the people that you have, but it's such a large dollar amount, it may be considered to be an expansion item. So I don't think the definition matters as much as, you know, there is, there are two types of requests, but as long as it's being requested, the dollar amounts, what's important, the amount that you actually, you'll actually be requesting from the county commissioners. Charter school impact. Here, you have a big, a large impact from charter schools. You have thirty-five kids from Granville County go to thirty-five charter schools. That doesn't mean there's thirty-five in Granville County, that just means there's thirty-five that you have Granville residents attending. And so that's a large, large number. I was mentioning to Vicky, I'm from a large county, and we had two in the county and maybe eight or ten that we wrote checks to. But y'all actually have thirty-five that you have kids attending, and it could be as few as one or several hundred, but you have thirty-five schools that you're having to write checks to for charter schools. And the way that works, just as, and I apologize if this is redundant, but with the charter schools, you get X amount of dollars from the county, and then you have to send a proportionate share to the charter schools based on the students that are attending that particular charter school. So typically, you'll see, to me, it's disproportionate to the county school because there are some things that are fixed. It doesn't matter how many students you have. For instance, maintenance on the buildings, or insurance, or things of that nature. There's certain things that you're going to have a cost, whether you've got, you know, fifteen hundred kids or sixteen hundred kids. It doesn't really matter at a particular school. But anyway, the money is divided up by student and goes out to each of those individual charter schools. Once again, this shows, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, this is, on this particular graph, we want to get across the point that seventy-eight percent of the kids that are funded with Granville County money are in your district, twenty-two percent are in charters. So you're on the high end as far as percentage of charter school students that are coming from Granville, okay? Not the highest, but you're on the high, you're on the high end. So what does that mean? That means if you, if you need a dollar from the county, and they give you a dollar, well, you've got to give twenty-two cents of it back to the charter school. So you really need more than a dollar, okay? For you to get what you need, you have to request more because you're going to have to send some of that money to the charter school. So, once again, when we start talking about the dollars that are needed for some of the salary items we're going to discuss, it's not dollar for dollar. When we put a budget together, it's going to have to take into consideration what you would actually have to ask for from the county to generate what you need for Granville Public Schools. So you can see that you have to ask for a dollar twenty-eight. For every dollar you need, you'll have to ask for a dollar twenty-eight from the county. That other twenty-eight, so to speak, is because of the charter schools. And sometimes people lose sight of that, they think it's a dollar for dollar, but since you're having to share it, you don't get to spend what you're supposed to share with them. Okay? So, once again, this just summarizes the request again, the continuation request and the expansion request. And so the continuation request for, in most cases, means there's nothing new. And during the recession and so forth, you saw a lot of continuation requests, but no expansion requests because there weren't any new dollars available, so you just tried to maintain the status quo. So sometimes you saw cuts as opposed to even being able to be held harmless. But the continuation request basically just means there's going to be nothing new in an expansion request or the new request. So what are our main drivers? This is the part that we want to spend some time on from the next few slides. What are the main drivers for the budget this year? Well, there's going to be a two-point, five percent average cost of living increase for your certified staff, okay? The majority of that will be picked up by the state because most of your certified employees are paid by the state. Now, it does impact your federal programs, your Title I, your IDEA, and many other federal programs, because they just get a dollar amount, and that dollar amount has to cover the raise. The federal government doesn't say, you know, North Carolina, we're going to give you some more money because you're giving raises. You've got to work within whatever that federal formula is to absorb that, in this case, a two-point-five percent for certified. The next bullet's the one that's going to be expensive, okay? You see that big range, two-point-five to fifteen percent increase for classified staff, not including compression. And I know a couple of you have heard this already because we had the committee meeting, but I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about this, and if I'm saying too much or too little, just interrupt me. This is very informal, so if you need to interrupt me, just, you know, shout it out or whatever. But let's talk about this bullet for just a few minutes. The state, in its last session, decided that they would raise the minimum hourly rate for certified, for classified employees to thirteen dollars an hour for the current year, and fifteen dollars an hour beginning July one of 2022. And that's great news because you're raising the minimum to something, to more of a living wage. The problem was, even for this year, for the thirteen dollars an hour, there was not a proportionate amount of state dollars to fund the increase of thirteen dollars an hour. And there's reasons for that, but it doesn't make it any easier to swallow, but the formula that they use is just an across-the-board formula, and they only look at certain allotments. And because the state gives us money in so many different allotments, I'll give you an example, say, exceptional children. You get so much per student. Well, the fact that you've got to pay your teacher assistants that are coming out of exceptional children two-and-a-half percent more, that doesn't mean they increased the allotment to cover it. You've got to cover it within whatever your existing allotment is. Whereas the allotment for teacher assistants, that's easy. That's all it can be used for is teacher assistants. They can put an arbitrary percentage increase in there, but you may need more in Granville to get to thirteen dollars an hour than Vance does, or vice versa. None of that was, there was no actual payroll records that were looked at to decide what was needed. So the districts that we've worked with so far, we haven't found one yet that had enough money to cover all the state employees that need to get to two-and-a-half percent, the two-and-a-half percent increase, or the thirteen dollars an hour. Okay? Yes?
The two-and-a-half percent, is that just the wage? Is that considering also potential health insurance cost increases?
No, we'll go over that in just a minute, too. There's going to be a retirement increase and also a health insurance increase that will actually be more than two-and-a-half percent. But yes, we'll, we'll talk about that also. Good question. Yeah, so the two-and-a-half percent is just for those folks who are making, for next year, make more than fifteen dollars an hour. The majority of your classified employees make less than fifteen dollars an hour, okay? On my count, which may not be completely accurate, but based on what I, I think you had a hundred and thirty-seven salaried employees that make less than twenty-six hundred dollars a month. That's what the fifteen dollars an hour equates to. So going from thirteen dollars an hour to fifteen dollars an hour is a fifteen, is a fifteen-and-a-half percent increase, okay? But we're required to do that because of state law. Does that mean we're going to get fifteen-and-a-half percent increase in our state allotments? Unless something drastically changes, I think I could pretty much bet my house that no, you're not going to get that fifteen-and-a-half percent. But what we don't know is how much are you going to get, okay? And so Friday, we received, there was a newsletter that went out that showed the ADM for next year. And as part of that newsletter, it also talked about the amount of money that was going to be added statewide for this second bullet, and it was fifty-three point three million. Or if you play with the numbers, I'll just get right to the chase, if you play with the numbers, that's not enough money, okay? But not only is it not enough money for you, but it's not enough money for any of the other school districts either. And so statewide, there's going to be a shortage of dollars available to implement the state mandate that you go to fifteen dollars an hour, okay? And we can talk about what can be done about that, you know, as we finish up or whatever, but I just think folks need to know ahead of time, you know, three months before the new fiscal year starts, or four months, maybe there's something that the General Assembly can do to make that right. Because going to thirteen dollars an hour wasn't as big of an issue as going to the fifteen. So yes, it did impact you because you didn't get enough money, but it wasn't a whole, a whole lot. Next year, we're talking a whole lot, okay? Don't know the exact dollar amount, but I just know that you've got, the majority of your classified employees will get a double-digit increase percentage-wise, and it doesn't appear that it's going to be, going to be covered. The next bullet talks about what was the question that was just asked, and we'll go and give the specific numbers in just a second, but estimated five percent for benefit increases. Health insurance goes up every year, retirement percentage goes up every year. And so we've got a number, a graph in just a minute, that'll show you the impact of these increases on a hypothetical employee. Projected student numbers. The numbers that came out Friday show that you're going to lose four-hundred-and-thirty-one students from a funding standpoint. And we have to remember, the state held us harmless for two years during COVID. And so basically, what you're looking at is what's happened over a two-to-three-year period to get that four-hundred-and-thirty-one student drop. So what does that four-hundred-and-thirty-one students mean? And I'm just going to give some estimates here, don't hold me to these exact numbers. But if you use a teaching ratio of one to twenty, you're going to lose twenty-one teaching positions. You're going to lose about half of an assistant principal position. You're going to lose two instructional support positions. You're going to lose dollars for custodians and clerks. You're going to lose TAs. Any allotment that is impacted by the number of students is going to go down. And so from a budget process standpoint, you have to decide several things. One, do you cut your positions based on that? Do you keep the positions and fund them with another source? Do you ask for more money from the county commissioners? You know, there's, there's different ways to look at it. So this isn't to tell you what you, what needs to be, what's going to be done, I'm just giving you options. But that is going to, the state's not going to fund all the positions in Granville that they funded the last two to three years, okay? And in some cases, you may have, you may have had the luxury of having small class sizes at some places for various reasons. Well, you may have to look and decide, is that something we can afford to continue? Or you may have AP classes. We used to have AP classes that were very small when I was working for a district. Well, at some point, we had to change the minimum number of kids that could be in that class because we couldn't afford the number of teachers that it took to offer everything. And so we had to look at, you know, teleconference and different ways of accomplishing the same thing, but not having as many people. So before you even look at what it's going to cost for the salary side, you've got to look at how are you going to handle those things that the state's not going to pay for next year, okay? Because that's going to impact how we build, how you build the budget, is how you're going to handle those particular positions. And once again, those were just estimates based on what the normal allotment formula is, but when the allotments come out in a couple of weeks, we'll have more exact numbers. I'll stop right there just for any questions on what I just talked about. Okay, let's talk about compression. We'll hit it in another section so we can keep going. So your top priority this year, from my standpoint, is going to be how to continue funding your classified employees and the benefit increases. The certified employees, two-and-a-half percent, that's a fairly normal request, but the classified employer request is going to be a lot bigger. So to me, that's probably your top priority, is trying to fund those positions. Now, we talked about compression a minute ago, let me explain with that what the compression means. I've been working for Granville Schools for fifteen years, and I'm making fifteen oh one an hour right now. You just started with Granville last week, and you're making thirteen dollars an hour. Come July one, you're going to go to fifteen dollars an hour. I'm going to get a two-and-a-half percent raise. Because that's, because I make more than fifteen already, all I'm going to get is the two-and-a-half percent. So I'm going to get a thirty-something cent an hour raise, you're going to get a two-dollar an hour raise. You just started. So that employee that's been with you fifteen years, right, that's been working as a custodian, working as teacher assistant, working as office personnel or whatever, that's got years of experience, they're getting short-changed because the raises are going to the folks that have the least years of experience, or at the lowest level of experience. to the folks that have the least years of experience or, or at the lowest level of the, of the pay schedule. Those folks that have been with you for a while or at a grade that their responsibility requires us to pay them more, they're only going to get the two and a half percent. So you go to school in August, and that person next to you just started brand new, getting fifteen dollars an hour. Or let's say that I was making fourteen something an hour, and all of a sudden I get moved to fifteen. We're making either the same thing, or I'm just barely making more than that person that just walked in the door. So what do you think that's going to do to morale in, not just in the classroom, but as a whole district? And this isn't just a Granville issue. I don't want you to think this, this is, we're working with about 12 or 14 districts right now on these salary issues. And so it's not unique to Granville. You've been put in that position. Like I, I like to tell folks, this is a state problem that's been funneled down to the locals. Okay. Because the state has not funded the classified allotments to the point that you could pay the folks more than what you're paying them right now. And so now that it moves to fifteen dollars an hour, all of a sudden, at one time, you've got, you're supposed to move them all up, but the state dollars aren't there to cover it. So not only do you have to, it'd be bad enough if you just had to worry about the local employees. All your maintenance folks are locally paid, just by, there's not a state code that pays them. And you've got probably some local, maybe custodians or clerks. But for the most part, your folks are state, state paid. And so if the state's not going to pick them up, and you're going to keep all these employees, that means you've got to find another source of funds to get them to fifteen dollars an hour. So that falls back on the, on the local unit. And so once again, it's not just Granville. All 115 school systems are in the, are in the same boat. You have to find a way to, to make up that difference or find a way to ask the state to put enough money in there to fund the mandate to get to fifteen dollars an hour. Any questions so far? So there mean to be such a, give you such good news. But anyway, it's just unfortunate this is a, an issue. Let's go to the next one. Here's an example. And your average, we took your total number of teachers and their average salary this year. It's forty seven, five seventy-three. So we said, what if they, they got a two and a half percent raise next year? That would be eleven hundred eighty-nine dollars. They're going to, their supplement's also going to go up because it's based on a percentage. So you're going to have, pay another 119 dollars for their supplement. Social Security is going to go up because their wages are going up. Look at the retirement. The retirement rate's going up. So it's not going up two and a half percent. You're going to see an eight point three percent increase in the retirement because the retirement rate's going up to twenty-four point one nine percent. Every dollar that you pay a person that's eligible, that's a contributing member to the retirement system, you're matching with twenty-four point nineteen percent next year. You add that to the social security of seven point six five, and the hospitalization next is going up 378 dollars for the year. You add all that together, you're, you have employees who are about 50% of what their salary is, is also being paid by the school district to cover them for social security retirement and health insurance. I mean, there, there's years where the retirement rate was less than 10% for many years. Social Security has been consistent. Health insurance, that's a five percent increase in health insurance in one year. So what you're seeing then, that, that employee, the cost of that one employee is almost four percent. When you add all, all the additional cost of the benefits and the salary, it's almost four percent. So that is taken into consideration. This is a certified employee. We didn't look at a classified employee because there's too many variables. Are they going to go to fifteen dollars an hour? Are they, you know, are they going to get the full two dollar an hour increment? We just use a certified employee. So almost four percent just for certified. Your classified is going to be quite a bit higher than that because of what we've already talked about. Does everybody understand that example? Okay. That's just a crap.
Yeah.
Just I'll take it out on the messenger. Okay. This is just a graph of what we just looked at. It just shows you the same thing, just in a graph or a, okay, next. These are, these are not current numbers. This is last year's numbers, but the, basically ADM funds, most of the formulas are ADM driven. And so we don't have the exact formulas yet for next year, even though we do have the ADM. And ADM, too, depends on which grades they're in. And so you get more teachers for your K three students than you do your nine through 12 students. So when I gave you an estimate, it was just an arbitrary one to 20. It really depends on where you're losing those 431 kids. If you're losing them at K three, you're going to lose a lot more than 20 teachers. Okay. If you're losing them at nine, 12, it'll be fewer than 20, or 21, whatever the number was that we looked at. So the ADM formulas that are grade specific could impact you more than what we've already talked about. And so the budget that's prepared for you will be based on that ADM that we received the other day of a sixty, sixty-six hundred and some odd students. I can't remember the exact number, but about sixty-six hundred students. Okay.
When we, but when we say we're losing, what we're really looking at, we're not looking at 400 kids leaving. We're talking about enrollment, and it's been a rolling type of situation.
Yes, ma'am.
How close were we? Does anybody know last year, the projection and how close it was? Had it ended up? How far off it was?
Well, with the last two years, they haven't done a projection because they've funded you, they've held you harmless. And that's why it's such a big number now, because you're looking at pre-COVID to now. So we don't know, you know, if it was 300 the first year or 100 the second year, what, but we do know by looking at the actual attendance records that the number's been below what you were funded two years ago continuously. It's been pretty, pretty consistent. It looks like, in the, back in the day, the state used what they called best one of two. Usually, the second month of school is your highest attendance month. If that's not the case right now, some districts we look at, because kids are coming back, you know, they may be in homeschool, or they may be, they feel more comfortable coming back to school, we're seeing it, just a slight increase after the second month. So, I mean, there's always the chance that you could pick up some additional students, and the state will increase that number if it's above a certain percentage. They'll give you some more money in the fall. But it'd have to be, I think it's two percent or 100 students of your ADM before they would give you additional money. From the other side, if you lose more than what they projected, they also take, you know, money away. So, but they won't do that until half, not quite halfway through the year, about a third of the way through the school year.
Thank you.
This ADM production isn't, does not include charter school production. Is that correct?
Right. So it does not, the, the number they're giving you is based on what they think you're going to have attend your schools. And so let's say that a new charter school opens in Durham. I'm just, I'll just make that up. And all of a sudden, you have 50 kids that leave one of your schools on the border to go to Durham. Well, that's going to reduce that ADM. And so that could impact that second month adjustment that the state makes. So right now, they're, they're making, the number they give us is the assumption that those kids will attend Granville Public Schools, not the charter schools. And there's always a charter school adjustment. Every year, there's a charter school adjustment. You could even have kids in existing, even if you didn't have a new charter school, if you had existing charter schools where more kids decided to go there, that would also impact your, impact your funding. Yes, sir.
You probably don't know this, but how is the projection of students that we're losing in terms of population? We know what the census, the northern part of the county is, losing population. We all know that. How is that taken into consideration and by who? Or whom? Does that make sense?
Yeah. The demographics within portions of the county. And so really, the state doesn't get into that. And, and they, they have a formula they use, and it's not necessarily, it's not going to be right all the time. I'll give you an example. I grew, I was in Cumberland County, a military community. So our numbers were all over the place. And so the number they get, we did our own projection because we kind of would know when troops were coming and going and how that impacted. So we couldn't really rely on Raleigh's numbers. Well, you could have a subdivision that's being built right now at the edge of Granville that's going to bring in 200 kids. The state may not know that. They may know your birth rate, but they don't know that you're going, that you've got a new subdivision that's going to maybe bring some folks in from Durham or Vance or whatever. And so it's not a, it's not a concrete number. I guess you could say it's their best guess.
So if we've lost 400 kids or whatever the number is, it would be interesting to know how many of those are as a result of the reduction of students, population wise, versus all of them being, going to charters. Does that make sense?
Home school.
Pardon?
Yeah, I was just trying to, usually when we do our presentations, we're at a table where we, I've been sitting over here kind of biting my tongue. Rick's doing a great job. But basically, home school is big also. And you know, the thing about your budget is kind of what Ricky talked about. You've got a three-year impact now occurring at one time in next year's budget with, with COVID. And basically, the biggest change in ADM in the history of the state in K 12 has occurred over the last two years due to COVID. And now all that impact's coming in on the financial piece in one year in your next year's budget. You know, when you start talking about such an ADM reduction of 432 students, as Ricky talked about, I mean, that's, that's huge in and of itself. And, but the state model includes live births and then charter school funding, you know, the growth of those. And we were talking earlier with Vicki, how many charters are you paying? Thirty-two?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five charters. I mean, they're huge. And it's kind of a shame that the state in the past has not had a funding model for charters that didn't have direct competition with the districts, you know? Because when you start looking at charters, you're looking at variable costs and fixed costs associated with that. And if a student leaves your district, the variable costs associated with a charter school student leaves, but your fixed costs, you still have the same number of buildings, basically the same number of buses, your square footage. So you've got all these fixed costs that continue on. But you know, when you start looking at Ricky's presentation, basically, you have almost a perfect storm now of where you sit when you look at next year's budget with an ADM loss that large, you know, the fifteen dollar compression issue that Ricky talked about. We're, we have just basically completed classified salary studies and certified in some districts for 53 of the 115 districts across the state. Now, why are so many, three of the RISAs, the Regional Service Alliance groups, did them as a, as a composite. But we've done probably a dozen or so where we went into individual counties and interviewed classified staff about what Ricky's talking about with the compression since the Great Recession of 2008, the frozen nature of the salaries. And it is amazing, some of the comments that classified staff have said to us about, you know, the fact that here, on my way into work today, I went, drove by Bojangles', and I saw sixteen dollars to nineteen dollars an hour, you know, that they're paying. And then you start looking at the competition that you have for your employees, the turnover, the number of vacancies. You've seen bus drivers strike across the state. You're seeing teacher assistant positions extremely hard to fill. So it kind of goes on and on. But that is an issue when you start talking about the compression. Some of the districts we're working with are saying, hey, how much does it cost to alleviate, to develop, for example, a three-year plan to alleviate the inequities? And let's pull a number out of the air. Let's suppose your number is 750,000 dollars. We have not done the study here to determine what that would be. But basically, some Board of Educations are asking county commissioners for a dedicated stream of additional funds. This is recurring money to alleviate over a three-year period of, of time, the, the inequities that have occurred since '08 through basically 2018. So those are some things to kind of consider as you go through. Now, your district, we looked, looked over your audit. One of the first things we do when we check in is check your audit. You've got roughly $7 million worth of fund balance in Fund Two, Fund Eight, of 7 million and change. And while we do not want to have a plan that uses fund balance to address recurring expenses, it's kind of like your savings at home. You know, your savings are your emergency money, and your fund balance here is in the same tone as you well know, those of you that are veterans of school board being on here. You don't want to budget recurring items out of that stream of fund balance funds. But, you know, developing a new stream of money and being able to justify that because when you look at the crisis now, as far as recruitment and retention of K 12, I mean, every day, you're hearing of school districts that have massive shortages, and nobody's coming to work for school boards anymore. In the old days, they did. In fact, what we're seeing in a lot of our studies is municipalities and county government are recruiting a lot of employees away from schools. Because they have not, their salary schedules have not been frozen. Municipalities and county government, you know, they have perceived raises because they have control of the tax rate. So I guess what we're saying is, the presentation today is a culmination of where you stand as school board members, you know, being able to make the case for the additional funds that are needed now. Because basically, this is a one-year budget. You're preparing 22, 23. However, it's basically a three-year budget because your needs have not been met in the past, as Ricky mentioned, to the thirteen dollar, and now going to fifteen dollars an hour. One of the things that's going to happen is the kind of boomerang aspect of that budget is the morale issues you're going to be facing with your classified staff is going to be huge.
Can I ask you a question real quick? You had talked about fixed and variable costs for students. What would be considered a variable cost for students?
Well, the General Assembly would look at variable cost being the teacher themselves, you know, the teacher, the supplies, the technology money and so forth. But the fixed costs are primarily on the local side. You know, the, the building, heating and cooling, the square footage in the building, all those type things. And it, that's kind of a simplification, but there are more fixed costs. But, you know, what we're seeing across the state is a lot of school boards are looking at some of the local schools. And I think we're all in favor of having schools on every corner within our neighborhoods. It's just, there's a lot of benefit to having neighborhood schools. But a lot of districts are being forced to close schools that have smaller numbers. I mean, we've seen schools in the western part of the state with 125 kids, you know, a school, a school that could basically house 600 very easily, you know, having to make hard and fast decisions about closing schools. And I know that's something this board has looked at also. We don't, you know, without doing, and I think you've had a couple of studies and so forth, but those are some of the hard and fast decisions that school boards are having to make. This district is, has been well managed in the past. And having a fund balance of about $7 million is really good, relatively speaking, compared to other districts your size. But it is amazing how fast that money can evaporate if you, if you tap into it in a, in an illogical way. Anyway, that's more than you want to hear. Those are kind of my reflections on Mr. Lopes' presentation so far, anyway.
Thanks.
Joining.
Would, in general, classified employees that we're talking about, would they not be more likely to be residents of Granville County rather than driving in?
For the most part, yeah.
Which I think that's a good point for our commissioners. These are residents of our county that we want to pay.
Yeah. People aren't going to move for the lower paying jobs. I mean, hate to say it that way, but that, usually they're not going to move from one side of the state to the other, you know, for the, and most of your classified employees are lower paid, obviously, than the certified staff. And so a lot of times, they're your homegrown, you know, people. So, yeah, they usually are local. And just to put it in perspective, since 2008, 2009, if an employee only depended on the state raises, they've received less than 1% a year for the last 13 years, on average. There were years they got nothing. But on average, it's less than 1% a year. So you just think about just inflation. How much is, how much does a gallon of gas cost? How much does a loaf of bread cost? You know, how much does a gallon of milk cost? Health insurance, if they have family coverage, they're, they're making, they're taking home less money now than they were 13 years ago if they have family coverage for health insurance. So in this, Hank alluded to this, but during the recession, because school systems were so dependent on state money, the state revenues were decreasing. So they had to decrease school funding. So they weren't given raises. Locally, they don't depend, obviously, as heavily on state funds. So they were still able to, you know, get your property tax money and so forth. So you saw, there may not have been big increases, but you generally saw your municipalities and counties and so forth being able to give at least some raise over that period of time. So it used to be that we were able to recruit from cities and counties. Now it's the other way around. And even at the state level, your transportation department, those guys that are diesel mechanics, if the state hasn't opened a DOT office here, they can offer them more money for the same position. Why is that? You know, they're both state paid, but yet their salary schedule puts them at a higher level than the money that we're funded for the schools. And so you have this going back and forth, but the classified employees have, have been left behind. And I think if we learned anything from COVID, it was how dependent we are on the classified employees. I don't know if it's, if it's gotten as high as it needs to get yet, but you saw how dependent we were on child nutrition services, on the technology folks that go out to the schools, on the maintenance guys. And I'm not mentioning all the groups, but you just know that we, that we were heavily dependent on them during COVID. And so now we are trying to raise the minimum. But how about those folks that have been with us through thick and thin? What are we going to do, what are we going to do for them? to do for them? So, uh, next slide please. I guess we talked about this because there is, uh, has been hold harmless. You haven't seen a decrease in your funding, so now it's coming all at one time. Um, you know, could there be action taken to hold you harmless again? Sure, anything could happen between, you know, now and July, but, um, right now, based on your preliminary numbers, you would, uh, you would not be held harmed. Seven thousand forty-seven was your, um, number that you were funded on, uh, in twenty-one, twenty-two. The number we got yesterday or, um, Friday was sixty-six, sixteen. And so that's the four hundred and thirty-one student decrease. Uh, it's not on the slide because we'd already submitted it by the time we got the number. But, um, so you're having a four hundred and thirty-one student decrease. So about a six percent decrease, um, in student population from, for funding purposes.
But that's cumulative for two years.
Yeah, yes. And if, if you needed to know what year, it'd really be hard to do because of COVID, there's, it wasn't just kids got up and moved or whatever. So it really would be, you could look at the raw numbers, but it really probably still wouldn't tell you why, why a stu, why a school decreased. They could be twenty students short, but you don't know if it's because of COVID or they left and, you know, went to California or whatever. But you could, you could see school by school which ones, which ones have lost. And so this kind of just summarizes the, the, the budget from how it's put together is based on the ADM and they use the best one of two or projections, whichever one's higher. And so, um, once again, we got our number on, on Friday. And so you're looking at a four hundred and thirty-one student decrease in, in students for state purposes. Okay. This is something that within your district, that, um, each district has its own peculiarities or things that are unique to them. These are positions, the value, uh, dollar amount of positions that you're held, that you've held harmless with federal funds, at least for one year. I don't know if this is your second year or first year. Is this the first year that you've done that or second?
It was the first.
First, okay. So if you did, if you continued that, you would be holding it harmless for two years. And when you put the, um, raises and so forth in there, that nine hundred thousand number is going to be a lot higher. Um, you know, probably closer to a million or so by the time you put the, by the increases in there. So that's just something to consider as you're developing your budget as, uh, as you look at, um, in this case, hold harmless for positions. You're not going to be able to see this real good, I don't believe, but, but what we want to get across here is the compression. So if you look on the left-hand side where it says teacher assistant, you look and see that a beginning teacher assistant makes twenty-two, thirty-six a month. Okay? We'll go all the way to the eighth year and they're still making twenty-two, thirty-six a month. Okay? And so you have to go all the way to the twenty-eighth to the twenty-sixth year before they're at the level that you're, you're supposed to be at next year. So everybody that's, that's paid from zero to, to twenty-five years, um, is going to get a significant increase because they're supposed to be at least twenty-six hundred, and that's twenty-six oh-six. But, um, they have to at least be at that level starting July one. So you could pretty much say at least ninety-five percent probably or higher of your teacher assistants are going to get a significant raise. And if the state's not picking that up, the total amount, once again, that's got to come down to local. Look at the next one, the custodian. Uh, from here, you can see through twenty-seven years, they're still not even at twenty-six hundred dollars at the twenty-seventh year. And so you have large numbers of employees in both of those categories. That's why I say you're going to have a, a big impact just to get to the fifteen dollars an hour, let alone do you, do you decide that you want to pay the person with twenty years differently than the person with one year? I would think that you would. Um, you know, if not, it's a pretty easy co, computation. How much is it going to cost to get to fifteen dollars an hour? But if you want to differentiate, that's what takes some time to figure out what, uh, and once again, that's something we've done for some school districts. If that's something that y'all would engage us to do, we can do it. But that, right now, we don't have that, um, as part of what we're, we're doing for you right now. But that, that would be a significant increase to be able to, um, to do that. Does everybody understand that, what we mean by the compression? Okay. So those are some things for you to, well, really one thing with a lot of variables to, to consider as you're starting your budget process, but we didn't want to wait till April to spring this on you. We thought you needed to know this upfront so you can determine what your priorities are, um, and whatever communication you need to have with your local elected officials as to what kind of plan can be developed over a period of time. Um, it'd be unrealistic to think all of it could be handled in one year, but, um, it could be handled over a period of time if there was some, you know, collaboration or cooperation between the elected officials. Any questions, um, things that we haven't talked about that you may have a question on or?
How is the fuel cost fluctuations affecting budgeting for the coming year?
An additional allotment came out this past week for transportation because, uh, and not that they're recovering every dollar of the increase, but the transportation allotments did go up and I'm assuming it was for that reason, um, this past week. And so historically, the state has done that. If the gas prices go up from whatever source they find, they try to increase the transportation budget to allow for that. So I'm, I'm sure the budget that's currently in place for next year does not take that into consideration. So they would need to adjust that for next year, um, to, to cover the, um, significant increase in the fuel costs.
Thank you.
You may not know this, but if you could go back to the salary schedule slide, do, do we know where I guess the average falls for our, like, teacher assistants? Are most of our teacher assistants around ten on the scale or twelve?
It's pretty close. I haven't done it for Granville, but for the districts that we have done the more detailed analysis, it's anywhere from eleven to thirteen. So not quite in the middle, but, but somewhere in that range is typical is the, uh, about the average for, um, the classified employees.
Just kind of by way of information, when we do an individual study, what we try to do is work with the administrative team, the superintendent and staff, and select a cohort of five to six districts of similar size and demographics. And then we do surveys. What are you paying your custodians? What are you paying electricians, your skilled employees and so forth? And we do an analysis and basically look at where you, where your employees stand now based on comparison of those districts and, and basically try to come up with an amount of money that we talked about to alleviate compression. And then we do a market analysis also based on the metropolitan statistical area of what, what private industries pay and, and so forth. As you well know, being so close to Raleigh and the Durham markets, I mean, your, your licensed individuals are in high demand. Even, we're seeing bus driver shortages in surrounding districts, you know, when the CDL, we've heard administrators say we're a training ground for our bus drivers. As soon as they get the CDL license, bang, they're marketable and they're out there leaving, they're going to work with waste management in a lot of areas with the state, you know, as, as Ricky discussed, kind of in other areas. So that's a little bit of methodology of what we do when we do a study.
Any other questions or comments?
So, um, obviously this is not good news. The, the next question is that given the way we have been funded in the past by the commissioners, which was basically nothing or actually almost a cut, how do we, and I'm just asking this, you know, rhetorically right now, how do we make sure that we communicate in a way that, um, that what they've shared with us and in a way that doesn't allow them to get off the hook? And what I mean by that is that certainly last year and the year before, there was very little, um, recognition of the needs that we, we turned in and, and many of those were expansion. Uh, not all. But next year, I mean, this year, um, we're just, there's no choice, given what we're going through with all this and the fact that we're going to have to cut anyway because of ADM, ADM and numbers. Uh, it will be critical if we cannot get the commissioner's support. And to me, the way, the only way we're going to get it is if we somehow communicate all of this in a way that the public understands and to, um, also, uh, make sure that we try to deal with stuff in the budget that really is not our responsibility, such as, you know, they, the comment forty percent of the budget is edu, is Granville County schools, uh, but the four-point-one million or three-point-eight or whatever it was, uh, was never recognized as a charter school kind of thing. I guess what I'm getting at is how we do this and how we move forward is going to be so tough. And, and just to share with you, the other aspect of all this is that we constantly hear the commissioners say, you lost ADM, you need to close schools. Well, that's okay in a sense because what they do is, as they did at Toler, is they cut our funding when we cut, uh, closed a school instead of allowing us to have the flexibility to use those funds, um, to help pay for some of this. So it's really a, a, you know, a, a tough situation. And, and, um, there are commissioners, not, you know, I'm not being mean spirited by any chance, but there are commissioners who truly believe that they can tell us what to do about budget. And we were, I heard one say to somebody, I think it was over at Creedmore Elementary, that the schools were being punished because they, two years ago, that budget, we were being punished because we hadn't basically done what they wanted us to do. And, um, I think it's, it would also help maybe whenever, that we are all real clear about what role legally the commissioners have on the school, uh, school system.
We're going to have the attorney speak to that after this presentation.
Excellent. I knew you would do something good. Okay. But anyway, that, I hope that's not too long-winded. It is, but phew, our job is incredible.
Well, I was just talking with the superintendent. So obviously when the finance committee found out about this, uh, minimum wage and then the compression of the schedules on, on top of all the other issues we already have, um, we began to talk, we, we need to make the liaisons and the county manager aware of this, uh, so that they can be prepared for this conversation coming their way in just a few weeks. So we were discussing some dates for that. But I think it is important for them, one thing that Ms. Williams pointed out was this is not pie in the sky money we're looking for. This is funding residents that live here and pay these taxes as well. Um, so we need to make sure that, that everybody's kind of clear on that. So.
One of the things that I'd like to mention that it sounds like this, this, excuse me, mandate, unfunded mandate from state to some degree. And in the past, uh, well, I guess the state legislators think we are used to it so they can just do it to us any way they want to. But this is a big deal. And, uh, you know, I, I tend to agree wholly with what Tom has said. We have a heck of a time getting, uh, small sums compared to what we're going to be looking for this time. Uh, and I just hope, uh, you guys have some influence over in legislators to help us out with this. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add, you know, this is my first time attending one of these. I'm new to the board, but I tell you, I, I really feel that it's going to have to hit up at a higher level than us here at the legislative level. And I just don't see why we're not or who is supposed to go to that level, if it's the citizen, if it's the parents, if it's the community, or if it's, you know, the school system to get them to start relooking at this because this impacts, you know, the whole state. I mean, it's like the public school is the last thing on the agenda or on the plate where it should be the first thing. And it, I think it's dribbled, dribbled down from the state level down here to us, just like they put it, okay, local school board, you all make the, um, final decision. You all figure out where you're going to get the money. What are you all doing at the legislative level? We put you there. What are you doing for us? And I just don't see where they're doing anything.
You, you ask, Ms. Anderson, you ask who? But every, anybody that has a vote has a say.
But that's, you know, and everybody need to know they have a vote or, you know, have a say.
I think that's probably where we as a board might need to reach out to our legislators and then maybe the school board association as well because obviously this is affecting across the state.
Across the state. That's what they're saying. And it's, um, it's, it's really, it's something that needs to be looked at. We can't keep pushing it over to the side because like you said, this last two years with the COVID now is just hitting us, you know, flat, just taking us down.
And you know, it's easy to say, close the school, but when you do, there's so many unintended consequences. Uh, you don't necessarily save the money that the studies show because if you even have fifty kids leave, you've lost a great portion of that money you supposedly are going to save, not to mention additional bus cost and different things that can happen. So it's, it's not a
That's true. That's very true.
Just close this and you're going to have the money situation. So.
And basically what you're saying is, and I think I heard you said before, when we did close the school like Toler, then what did the commissioners do? They pulled back funds. Come on now. You, you know, can't have it both ways. We need those funds.
And half the kids that were at Toler are now in, in, uh, charters, if not more than half the kids.
Yes.
Well, um, I, I think one of the things Ms. Williams said and David kind of reiterated, I, I think in order to get the public to really get behind this and understand, we need to put some numbers behind it. We need to look at what percentage of our classified staff are Granville County citizens. And that is where I think if they start to speak to their county commissioners, their representative, that puts a little bit more pressure on them to kind of help us out and alleviate this because these are their residents that we need to, we need, we need to talk about. So we need to get, get some numbers behind that.
Well, and during the consolidation conversations, we had several parents and parents groups that said that they would advocate on our behalf. So, uh, maybe let's work on, on a plan and we'll put it out before us and say this is how we're going to advocate for this. Well, thank you for that barrel of sunshine you brought. Sorry. Now I know why Vicki brought you in.
She's pretty smart.
It just seems that with it affecting so many, all the districts in the state that something can be done at a state level. I'm with you on that.
Well, that's obviously the topic of Leandro litigation, which I'm happy to address as well.
Took a nasty turn this weekend.
To, to an extent.
Okay. Um, thank you guys. Do you want to go ahead and speak to our legal?
Sure.
Responsibilities?
Um, and certainly ask questions so I can know sort of what areas. I'm just going to briefly summarize. Of course, our state constitution requires that the state maintain a system of free and appropriate public schools. Now, the General Assembly initially in, you know, in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds delegated that immediately to the counties. Um, and my understanding is around the depression, that really started to fall apart and the state public school fund was created. And so the balance has waxed and waned over, over the generations. But essentially what's in statute now is that the General Assembly has delegated to counties the responsibility for facilities, for building equipment, uh, building, equipping and maintaining sufficient school facilities for you to provide a quality education. Um, and then you have the state public school fund for instructional expenses. Now, that said, no county school board finds that the state public school fund is providing sufficient instructional expenses to actually meet all of, uh, the needs that you identify. So the, the budget, so then you have the local current expense fund. And so when your county gives you an appropriation, it's, some of it is for capital, which is building, equipping, renovating those facilities, and then you have the local current expense fund. Um, and so the way that shakes out is you present your proposed budget to the county and the commissioners and, and starting, I think last year, you also have to present them some academic data with it, specifically your, um, performance, your school performance grades. Um, and then the commissioners and the commissioners can ask for other financial information if they want, and then they make their appropriations. And they can either appropriate to you just capital and local And they can either appropriate to you just capital and local current expense. Um, they can, um, identify it by purpose and sometimes do, you know, like, here's an additional appropriation that's just for local supplements or something like that. So that is possible, um, but they don't have to identify it by purpose or, or project code. And then that's, you know, that's your appropriation for the year, certainly as additional, if, if emergencies come up during the year, as they have here from time to time, the, the county can change its appropriation. And then within that appropriation, the Board of Education, um, has authority generally to spend the money. Um, you do need county approval to move funds into or out of the capital allocation. And if the county has designated certain funds for a certain purpose and you want to move funds in and out of that, um, pot by more than a certain amount, by more than 25%, you have to get county approval. If you, once the county makes its appropriation, there is a dispute resolution system if you dispute what they have given you. Um, that system has changed over the years and in recent years. Currently, you can seek mediation to resolve a dispute over your funding from the county, but if the dispute is over local current expense money, um, there's no longer an option to, if your mediation is not successful, there's no longer an option to go to court over that. It would default to a funding formula that's in the statute that's based, based on the previous year's funding with some adjustments for ADM and for, um, Consumer Price Index. You can still initiate a budget dispute over capital funds. You'd have to, you, you know, addressing whether or not you have the funds to provide sufficient facilities for your public schools. So have I hit the general areas that you were interested in? Are there questions about legal obligations from that standpoint?
So the county commissioners, uh, we do a budget and then they approve it or, or dis-
So they make an appropriation to you and they can just make a lump sum or they can break it down a little bit. I, in the past, I think your county has
Has broken it down.
Has broken it down? Okay. And of course, you know, as I said, I, I mentioned the Leandro litigation. You know, that litigation is all about, because the, again, the constitutional guarantee of a right to an education says that the state will provide. And the courts have been clear that it is the state's role as opposed to the, the county's. And so, you know, judges in, more than one judge in this longstanding litigation, which was initiated when I was in high school, um, are, have consistently said that the state is not meeting its burden of funding the instructional needs. The most recent, you know, order was for a plan, approving a plan that would, I believe it was 1.7 billion more needed to be spent by the state. Thus far, the general assembly has not agreed to fund that. And so what we have right now is, and, and, you know, the Leandro case originally was a set of rural school districts suing the state. Some urban school districts also came in. So the plaintiffs were the school districts, the defendant was the state. At this point, both the plaintiffs and the defendants are all in agreement because the state, you know, with the state as represented by the executive branch, are in agreement about what needs to happen and have essentially agreed that the, the state public school fund is insufficient. But the dispute is over whether the courts have the authority to require the legislature to therefore spend more money on education. That dispute is ongoing.
So why did they, I understand they have a new judge. They evidently they fired one because they wasn't doing what the general assembly wanted them to do. This is my opinion, of course. So they hired somebody that's going to
So there is a new judge and I
Have a new direction, sure.
There are different explanations out there as to why, but they held, he held a hearing on Friday. Um, and, and one of my colleagues attended and, you know, at this point, so it's before the North Carolina Supreme Court, this issue of the, the legislature intervened and appealed this order, ordering them to implement this funding plan. And that's before the Supreme Court. It's gone back to this trial court, but really for the discrete issue of what, how, what impact on the plan the most recent budget has. Essentially, have some parts of the plan now been funded? Have some parts of, of Judge Lee's order no longer applicable? But it's not really reopening the whole discussion. And so, um, but yes, there is, there is a new judge.
But from what I gather, the, the bottom line in this is the, uh, general assembly don't wanna fund the amount of money that they're supposed to and the amount of money that the other judge they got that left, let's put it that way.
Right.
Wanted, funded, I don't remember the exact figures, but it was a bi-, one billion and something, I think.
It's like 1.7 billion.
And, uh, there is no doubt in my mind that this new judge is not gonna get funded at that level.
Well, um, I guess what I can say is indications are at this point that he doesn't see his role as reopening decisions that were already made. So we'll see. But yes, the, what happened was the plaintiffs and the defendants, the state and the counties agreed jointly to hire some outside experts to come up with a plan that would provide sound, basic education and it focuses on several discrete issues, building quality teachers, you know, high quality instruction, this sort of thing, and then what it would cost. And the cost was about, um, well, 1.7 billion was the first, was level one. Um, and then the judge ordered the state to implement that plan and that is what is under appeal.
One last question. As I said earlier, uh, there are some of us who maybe do not understand the difference at, of two different boards, elected boards in terms of they, the commissioners may have control over us in some areas. And if you'd address that, and then second, related to that, I, you know, I think a few commissioners have told some board members, I don't know this for sure, have told people that they do tell us what to do. Sometimes we don't do it, but that's what you get.
So would you just clear that up?
Well, so the, the county commissioners have the authority to set your local appropriation for local current expense fund and your capital, your local appropriation for capital needs. Um, and within that, they can designate pots of money for various purposes within the uniform budget format. So it's not, you know, there, there is a uniform budget format that has certain categories that every school system has the same categories. And so they can designate funds within that, although they don't have to. And so that, but then as far as, you know, then setting and implementing policy with those funds, that would fall to the Board of Education. Um, but ideally, you know, the two work together.
All right. Any other budget questions or anything around that? All right, so our next steps for this. We will get a budget update to the full board at our meeting on the fourth. Uh, again, we will attempt to schedule a liaison meeting to start having those discussions. And then at the Monday, April 18th, that's a work session that we will, uh, work on the consideration for the budget proposal. So be prepared to come and, and discuss that. All right, there's nothing else for the, yes, ma'am?
Do we, at this point, do we make a decision on whether to study the compression schedule? Or does that come later?
Does that come in later? Is that what we talked about?
If we're ready to make that decision today, I recommend we do so, making a jumpstart.
Okay. Is that something you want to make a motion on?
What was, what was the question?
So she was asking, is, is now an appropriate time for us to make a decision to engage the Hurt group to do a co-, uh, salary schedule study for that compression?
With three-year plan, if we were gonna present it to the commissioners?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And is that a motion to direct the administration to pursue that? Because obviously you don't have a contract in front of you.
Is that what your motion is?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, so we have a motion by Dr. Houlihan and a second by Ms. Williams. Further discussion or questions?
Yeah. Question is, are we going to get, I don't know, just some specifics as to the cost of that, right? Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
And I, I have one point of clarification as well. You know, you have to submit your budget to the commissioners, um, by June 1st, May 1st? May 15th, right. So is that, is this something that you were thinking you're gonna have before then?
I think you don't get before the
Is that something you guys are able to accomplish?
You better be. The issue is getting it to you in time for you to look at and approve before May 15th. And so really, could we have a final product possibly by May 15th? But that may not give you time to look at it and feel comfortable with it. For us to do what, like, like Hank said, for us to be able to get information to compare you and develop the scale, it does take, you know, two to three months. We can get you some estimates as to what we think is gonna be based once we get started. But as far as having the final report that we present to you, that may go past, especially since you're considering the budget. I know it won't be ready by April 18th, you know, when you're trying to consider a budget, but we should be able to get some good numbers as we go along with the final product being done probably sometime by the end of, by the end of, uh, May 1st of June.
So an estimate would at least get us started in the conversation about a, a three-year plan?
Yeah, and as Vicky said, we don't wanna rush it when we do it. We wanna make sure we do a high-quality job for you, obviously. So, you know, having it by early June would probably be a more realistic timeframe. And then two, it, it gives it to you where you can go back for in a supplemental meeting. You know, we've had a lot of success with county commissioners because we're an outside entity and, and providing a very objective report that kinda stresses how far behind you are. It's a multi-year approach anyway, so hopefully it would be something that would be beneficial.
Have a question. And, and I don't know, excuse me, does the, can the administration do a, a report that gives us some idea of where we are?
Well, that, that's the estim-, the first estimate they're gonna do. And then we'll get a final report back.
And that's my question. Has to do with if we can get an estimate report from administration, why we need them to do one? That, I mean, that's the question that I have.
Mr. Peace, I didn't, didn't hear that. Could you repeat it?
Their report initially gonna be an estimate. And my question was, can administration give us an estimate?
I'm going to say, I doubt this time of year is a good time because we just began audit information this week.
And, and they're still down a person with these things.
Well, you, you don't have to spend a lot of time convincing me. It was just a question. I think I've had an answer to it.
So I doubt it.
All right.
Okay, I guess I'm a little
It is very labor-intensive, I'll just tell you.
It is.
And we have more work than we can do, so we're not trying to solicit. We did, we will do it for you, but it takes a lot of time. And the credibility of having an outside group can, can be huge.
That would be my thinking.
As far as, and, and Mr. Hurt is right, it's a multi-year. I mean, whatever the estimate is, it's not something that you would be able to implement in one year.
Right.
It is allowable under the statute for the commissioners and the Board of Education to agree to do their budget late. But I don't know, so that's just, it, it is a, they, like, the statute says you have to give it to them by May 15th and they have to take action by July 1st. But in both cases, it says, "Or such later date as the two may agree to." So I put that out there for consideration while noting that depending on, if this is when they're doing their budgets for all departments, you know, you wouldn't wanna be, to miss out on that, so.
That, she just answered my question because we had talked about the commissioners having a timeline and then we were talking about their timeline and everything else. So that's what I was getting back to.
So kind of restating where we're at is that Dr. Houlihan made the motion for the administration to seek, to engage the Hank group, to provide the salary compression scale, an estimate first for us to do budget work with the purpose of going forward with a full study. And that's for them to bring a contract back to us. Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is that good, Ms. Williams? All right. Any other discussion?
Just, so what we're, we're gonna get the study and all, all that. It, does the motion need to include anything related to getting budget figures to be put into this budget?
Well, that's the estimate.
And that's? Okay, that's, okay.
All right. If you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, so next we have our instructional walkthrough work. I believe Dr. Winborn is gonna present that.
Yes, sir, he is. Citing academic information, Dr. Winborn.
All right. Good afternoon, board members. Give me just a moment. Well, it's good to see you all today. I hope this next little part of our work session will be a little more fun. Um, I do plan to, uh, try to make it interactive and engaging at some parts. I'm excited about being able to present this because you've heard me reference many times instructional walkthroughs, classroom walkthroughs, our walkthroughs, our walkthroughs. I've, I've talked about it quite a bit and I feel like today is an opportunity for us to see what they're really all about. And, um, I'm gonna show you guys a video of one of our classes and we're gonna just sort of role-play together doing a classroom walkthrough. So I think it'll be a lot of fun and, um, again, this is informal. So as we're going through this presentation and then the activity, please just stop me, ask questions, um, feel free to share, you know, your, your impressions, some feedback, whatever you like. I, I really wanna make this a true, uh, work session when it comes to this topic. Mr. Graham is handing out three different items and I'll be touching on each of those as we go through. But, um, I, I really just wanted to start off by saying, to me, this is a, this is, this is central to our work, um, the classroom walkthroughs. This is part of the focus of keeping the main thing, the main thing. We are an academic institution and, um, the teaching and learning that goes on in our schools. This particular instrument that we use is critical to making sure that we do a really good job when it comes to our students. So, you know, to me, this, this is a linchpin in our work. You may have heard this phrase, "Inspect what you expect." I've heard, I've heard this frequently. I've also seen variations of this. I've seen something called, "People don't do what you expect, they actually do what you inspect." That's maybe a, a flip, a flip of that, uh, that phrase. But there's something, um, called the Hawthorne effect. Has anyone ever heard of that before? Hawthorne effect, this is a, a psychological term. Hawthorne effect, this is a psychological term that goes back to the 1920s. There was a series of studies done around sort of the, the age of modern industrialism where people went into factories and looked what workers were doing. And one of the things that they discovered in trying to increase productivity and increase quality was that when, you know, you checked on what people were doing, not only did, did people make more stuff, but their morale went up also, that they tended to feel better about their work. So, you know, that sort of notion that, you know, when you pay attention to what people are doing and you try to support them in that effort, they're gonna feel better about it and they're gonna increase their productivity or the quality of their outputs. So this is a pretty well-known phenomenon, and I think it certainly applies to our work as well. And that's part of what we're doing when we do walkthroughs. You know, we're not, we're not inspecting our teachers to try to catch them or do something wrong, you know, like, oh, I got you, you know, Ms. Williams, let me make sure you're doing your job today. No, no, that's not what it's about. It's, it's to go in and check against what we've set up as, as the standard expectations and then provide feedback, you know, to let people know that when they're doing a good job, we wanna recognize that. We wanna, you know, celebrate it. And then where there's, where there's challenges, we can provide supports. We can give coaching. We can steer them in a direction that can help them do better. And so by doing that, we hope that our student achievement will be leveraged to increase. There's been a lot of research done about this and a lot of studies. I mean, so it's, it's pretty clear, this is a actual way, a cause and effect lever in our work. And if we do these walkthroughs and we do them well, we do them with fidelity, we provide that feedback, and we use the data to make our decisions, that student achievement will increase. So in our schools, when we talk about a walkthrough, we're not talking about an evaluation. Okay, that's really important to make that differentiation. Our teachers get evaluated. They do, they have to. It's part of, you know, the structure for, uh, I seem to have lost my projection there. The, it's part of the processes and procedures. There you go. That was me. That, that teachers must undergo periodic evaluations in the state system to keep, you know, their, their employment in good standing, and there are all these different standards, and there's ratings for each of those, so that, that's all still in place. And that's something a principal does with their, with their teachers. But a walkthrough tool is different, okay? This is used to just monitor, analyze, and evaluate, and then support those teachers. So these are snapshots in time, okay? And when we do these, we're looking for really two things. We're looking for two things. We're looking to make, see what teachers are teaching, that's the what we teach, and how they're teaching it. It's really that simple. It boils down to those two areas, what we teach and how we teach it. Again, looking for consistency and measuring it against the expectations in our district. So when we're, when we're in there looking for the what, right? What we're really talking about are the standards. You've heard Dr. McLean say that over and over again. We teach to the North Carolina standards, the standard course of study. That's laid out for what students should be able to know and should be able to do. Okay? That's, that's the what we teach. And then we use our local curriculum, which is aligned to those standards. Okay, so that, in simple terms, if there's a textbook, it matches up and is congruent with the standards. It's not teaching something else. Okay? It is teaching what the state says our students should know and be able to do. And then there's evidence of instructional planning, planning on the teacher's part using the standards in our curriculum. So that's the what. Okay? And here's just, you have this handout right here. This is what our expectations in Granville County Public Schools are for instructional planning. This is the basic blueprint. We do not have a required lesson plan template in our school district, district-wide. Okay? We don't have a standard lesson plan template. We do, however, have these expectations right here. These components, these seven pieces must be included in each teacher's planning. The principal, the principal working with their leadership team, they decide and implement what their school's lesson planning format is going to be. And then the principal monitors that, and they keep track of it. Just an example, I know of one elementary school that they have a, they use Google Docs, right? They have a, the, the principal has created a template, and they have it Monday through Friday. And the teacher is to submit that prior to that week to the principal. The principal checks it and then keeps track in a spreadsheet of the progress for those teachers doing their instructional planning. And it has to include these, these components. So, you know, the very first thing is that you've got some sort of warm-up or anticipatory set, something to get the kids excited, access their prior knowledge, you know, before you start your lesson. Then you're gonna have some very clear learning expectations that are laid out and posted. We wanna see those posted in our classrooms. Okay? And those have to be based on the standards using our local curriculum. Then you've got the main part of the lesson, right? That instructional methods, the input, what the teacher is modeling or teaching or through direct instruction to the students, imparting that knowledge, you know? And there's a whole bunch of wonderful ways that can occur, but that's the big meat of the lesson. Then, as that, as that's occurring, there's this checking for understanding, making sure the kids are, are following, understanding what's going on. And then slow, that slow gradual release where the students get to try it on their own. The I do, we do, you do sort of model, that guided practice. You assist them as they begin to try it on their own, or do it in pairs, or do it in groups. Then they're allowed to do it on their own through a variety of methods. And then wrapping it up, drawing some closure to it at the end of the lesson. But that really, that number four, I'll go back to that, that checking for understanding, that's, that's really occurring throughout. You know, that could be almost a part of each, each one of these during the, during the heart of the lesson. But we're asking that this be the minimum, the minimum that's occurring with every lesson in our schools. Now, the reason I share this with you is because these components are being looked for in the, in the walkthrough. Now, depending on when you go into a classroom, you might not see them all, depending on the time that you're there, because a walkthrough, remember, is usually fairly short, somewhere between five minutes, maybe no more than ten. So I could come in at the tail end of a lesson, and I might not see some, some certain things that I would if I were there at the beginning of the lesson. And we'll talk more about that, especially as we look at the video. The second part that we're looking for in a walkthrough is how we teach, okay? What should we be looking for? What's, what are the behaviors of the students? What are the children doing in the classroom? One of the things you'll notice when you look at our walkthrough, it's a little different than, than a lot of the other ones I've seen, and I'll credit my team for this. Instead of going in and looking at what the teacher is doing, we're focused on what the kids are doing. To me, that's, that's the most valuable part. Because the teacher is setting up the conditions, the preparation, the planning, the activities, so that the children will be doing what you want them to. And these should be based on research-proven, high-yield strategies, okay? Not just things that we invent on our own, but that are known to make a difference. So this right here, this little graphic right here is what we in Granville County Public Schools, and this is, I'll give credit to my predecessor, Dr. Myrick, who helped develop this with our teachers and our educators. These are considered the fundamentals of our practice. If you kinda go around that outer yellow loop, integrated DLCs, that's a fancy name for technology, right? Digital learning competencies. That's what the state calls them. You're integrating technology, that the work is rigorous, it's engaging, they're clear learning expectations, that we're using data, right, to make our decisions. We're differentiating our learning when appropriate, and we're personalizing it for students. And it's, last but not least, based on the standards, right? That's so important. Because after all, that's how we are assessed, right? Those state EOGs and EOCs are standards-based assessments. All right. So let's go take a little bit further. When we're doing the walkthrough, and I, I shared with you a staple packet, right? This is the actual tool, okay? These are the questions that, or statements that we're looking for. Now, when, when we go to do a walkthrough, we're not using pencil and paper. We're actually, I can pull it up on my phone. I've got it just as a little, a little button on my phone. You can do it on your laptop, or you can do it on a pad, a tablet. And, you know, right when you walk in, the very first question just says, what's the teacher's username? So you type that in real quick. So I'll do Williams G. And it will pop up, oh, you're in Williams class. And then I would enter my name, and then I would enter my role, and then it would go right to the first question. So that's where you see on your sheet, the staple packet starts out with question number one. This is all done through a tool called Walltricks. And Walltricks is just a really sophisticated and wonderful way to collect information. You can look at it a lot of different ways on the back end. But when we're doing these walkthroughs, we're doing them electronically. And I just printed them off for you guys today, so you can kinda flip the pages and look at them as we go through them. This slide right here, the bullets up there, that's basically what we're looking for in the walkthrough. These bullets correspond more or less to the items in the walkthrough. So, Dr. Knight, can you read that through those first three or four?
Yep. We have objective, standards-based, local curriculum, differentiation, empathy, appreciation, respect for differences.
Okay, stop right there. Anything jump at you? Any comments about those, those four?
For me, I think one of the things I would definitely be looking for is differentiation because all kids are not the exact same, and you have kids at different levels. So I would definitely wanna see that instruction is meeting the needs of different kids.
Perfect. Excellent. Uh, let's see. Ms. Williams, will you read, read off the next couple of bullets, three or four of them?
Rigor, student voice, student engagement, feedback.
All right. Anything jump out there for you?
Yeah.
What about that student voice phrase? What do you think we're looking for there? And we'll talk more about these, each of these.
I think student voice would be the student feeling comfortable asking a question of the teacher.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Richardson, how about the next couple ones?
Stop with the feedback.
Mm-hmm.
So comprehension, student behavior, time on task, and digital tools.
There you go. Any of those ring a bell or strike you as?
I think the comprehension, I mean, 'cause if they're not understanding, then they're not getting what the standard is.
There you go. Exactly. So again, these are all look-for's, things we're looking for, all right? And there's a statement or a corresponding question that aligns up with these. And if you'll notice, these bullets go back to what we believe are the fundamentals for teaching and learning in our schools. So everything is aligned, all the arrows are pointing in the same direction. And these all are also indicated or connected to the instructional planning that our teachers should be doing on a regular basis. And then over to the side, you see those words, "a positive and I wonder." So we also have these little open-ended things at the end of the walkthrough, where if we saw something really neat, or unusual, or special, we could, we could add that, you know? And then there's an "I wonder." This could be an opportunity to provide some creative feedback, you know, ways that maybe the, things that, that you're, you're guessing maybe could happen after you leave the walkthrough, or an opportunity for you to follow up and make a connection with that teacher. Any questions about any of these?
I have a question.
Sure.
So when you're going out into school, are you looking at the lesson plan or the weekly thing the teacher's gonna be doing so you know what to look for?
It's a good question. So, um, let me start by saying, first of all, my, my team, we certainly do walkthroughs. We, we aspire to do ten each per week. The principal and their administrative team aspire to do every class every week. We do not, like, when I go into a school and I do a walkthrough, I do not look at their lesson plans. I do not. Now, the principals, they probably kind of already know because they've reviewed what's been submitted to them previously. They're a little bit more in tune with what's going on in their building. So they probably, even if they haven't read them, they probably generally know what's going on. But it's a good question, and, and really, I don't need to know what the full lesson plan includes, because again, I'm just doing a snapshot. And, and the goal is to, you get so many of these snapshots, right, thousands of them, that it starts to paint a picture with the data. It's a good question. Anybody else? All right. So, you know, each of those bullets, we go and we're sort of looking for it, and we have to grade it, I mean, we have to give it some value, what we see, right? There are a couple of questions that are yes and no. Then the rest, you have to assign it some degree of quality, right? So if I'm looking for something, I need to say, is it very evident? Is it evident, somewhat evident, or not evident? And then I pawf to the side there, I kinda basically tried to put in Engl-, you know, plain English what it means. If, if something is very evident, then wow, you know? That is an example of what I want other teachers to see. I went in there and the differentiation in that classroom was so good, I wish I'd videotaped it and shown it to all the other teachers on this hall. That's how good it was. It was four out of four stars. Boom! Top-notch stuff. Evident is what we expect, right? That is, that right there, that's the standard, evident. That's what our teach, our students need every single day. They need evident. But if it was so amazing, you know, it just really went above and beyond, then I would knock it up one more. Now, if there were some areas that maybe needed a little work, I would go down to somewhat evident, needs improvement. And if it just wasn't there, well, I would put not evident. It just wasn't acceptable. Now, you remember earlier I said it depends on when you go in and do your walkthrough, right? There could have been a time during that, during that lesson, maybe the lesson lasted forty-five minutes, maybe I was there near the end, and I just didn't see it because that wasn't really the right time where the teacher would have necessarily done that. So I would put not observed, which means they're just sort of exempt. There's no point, point values given. They just get a pass because it wasn't, there wasn't a good spot for it in that lesson when I went through. So any questions about how we sort of rate those or scale these as we're going through? All right. Again, as I said before, when we're going in, and I'm gonna show you a sample, a sample little video, we're, we're trying to pay attention to what's going on with the children, okay? With the children. Also, you see on this printout of the staple packet, if I'm doing this on my phone or I'm on my computer, as I'm going through these questions, you see how some of these words are underlined? So those are hyperlinks. The number, the question number one in the walkthrough, is the posted clear learning expectation aligned to the standards? Well, you know, I'm going into classrooms, elementary all the way to high school. If I go in a horticulture class in a high school, I don't really know what those standards are, to be honest. You know, I'm not completely, you know, up to speed on every standard for every grade level. I could click on our focus site, and then with just a couple of other clicks, two or three more, I can get to the standards for that course of study. And I can pull it up, and I can see, ah, yes, they're, what they're doing is actually aligned to the standards. I don't have to know everything all the time. I can pull it up very quickly. As you go down through these questions, there are other hyperlinks to other resources that help define what we're looking for, so that it's not subjective. so that it's not subjective, because what Mr. Richardson might think is good differentiation is different from what I think. Well, as it turns out, there's actually a body of research out there about what differentiation is, and how it's effective. And so, you would click on that link and go to it, and see that when it comes to differentiation, we either differentiate content, or we differentiate process, or we differentiate product. There's three parts. And we would do that based on a student's readiness, or their interest, or their learning profile, so on and so forth. I mean, it really gets down in the weeds, and so, and we have a lot of professional development about this with our teachers and our administrators, because we want there to be standardization in what we're looking for. Alright, so I'm going to show this video, and as you watch, I might interrupt and pause a couple of times to point a couple of things out. But what I'd like for you to do is sort of start to look for these things, okay? Start to look for these things. It's okay to flip back and forth. When I'm doing a walkthrough, I might have to go ahead to one of these, you know, you're not going to see numbers one through ten in sequence. So it's okay to jump around. You might see evidence of number three before you see evidence of number two. That's alright. You can make notes off to the side and that type of thing. Any questions? Alright, let's see, let me pull this up, and I'm going to make it fullscreen. And the volume should be good.
Multiplication strategy, multiplication strategies that you love. In order to multiply fractions and whole numbers. So we've been talking about fractions. We've talked about how to add as a track fraction. We've talked about how to compare fractions, and when equivalent fractions, and simplify fractions, which is part of the equivalent fraction. Now we're going to get into multiplying.
Alright, let me pause real quick. If you can see that, and I do apologize, the camera's going to move around, it's not stationary, and you'll see why. Didn't know if you were able to tell what was on her whiteboard, but it said, "Learning goal," right? And it had her peer learning objective there. Also, off to her right, sort of behind her, oh, thank you, that's better. Off to the right, sort of behind her, are her TSWU statements. "The student will be able to," and then the standards was right behind her. I know that it might not be easy to see on the footage.
What do we know about multiplication? Forget about fractions at the moment, but what do we know about multiplication? Parker, you put groups into that group. Alright, multiplication involves grouping, very good. What else can we know, Drake, about multiplication? Ah, the repeated addition. Multiplication involves repeated addition. So let's focus now on that repeated addition part. If we're multiplying fractions by whole numbers, and we know multiplication is just repeated addition, haven't we already added fractions? So now we're just going to take the fractions, and since we know multiplication is repeated addition, what do you think we're going to be doing with these fractions over and over? Multiplying them. Now multiplying them, repeated addition, we're going to be adding them over and over and over. Think about that in your mind as we go through this lecture. Alright, what I want you to do is I want you to write six times two as an addition sentence, showing six groups of two. So write six times two as an addition sentence, showing six groups of two. Six groups of two. Alright, Parker, apple.
What do you notice about the, what's happening there with the children?
I noticed that everybody was kind of, they're doing this same concept, but everybody has a slightly different way of doing it. I saw some drawing squares, some drawing circles, but they were, they pretty much had the concept down.
Right. So did she tell them how she wanted those six groups of two to look?
No.
Yeah, no, she didn't.
Pull your popsicle stick. Can you explain how you drew your map of the six circles into each one? Alright, Parker, very good. Why did you do that? Because it said, "Put six groups of two." Awesome job! We have six groups of two, and it says, "Put six groups of two." So like Parker said, he has six circles. He has put two, and he circled. So now, I want to draw a number line to show six groups of two. Draw another line. We're going to start at zero. How do I draw a group of two? What do you think I need to do, mine or mine? Alicia? Skip count by two, very good. So, I know this is one, two, maybe I could show a circle. Do you think that circle could represent a group of two?
Yes.
Alright, so this is one group of two. How many groups of two do I need? Six. Okay, so I need, here would be another group of two. Third group? And fourth? And fifth? And here, this one's next.
Why do you think she moved from groups to number line?
Showing different ways to comprehend numbers.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yet another concept map, if you will, another way for them to conceptualize and see. Remember, they're talking about multiplication, multiplication here.
Very good. We are going to be representing the multiplication of fractions both ways. Through a model, by showing repeated addition, and by showing it on a number line. Now, on our number lines, each of these half circles is going to represent a half, in this case, or a group of two. So this is our group of two. This is our group of two, okay? The same concept that we just showed with these whole numbers is going to be the same concept when I draw a fraction. Don't be scared, because it's a fraction. We know how to do it with whole numbers, we're going to know how to do it with fractions. Yes, right. Very good. So another way we can show six times two is only doing two groups of six, instead of six groups of two. Yes, absolutely, very good. Alright, so, now I want you to talk with somebody sitting next to you. So you're going to work with somebody sitting next to you this time. I want you to write six times one-half as an addition sentence, showing, listen carefully, six groups of one-half. So talk with somebody sitting next to you. We're going to look, six times one-half, and we're showing six groups of one-half. You-
Couple things to notice here. What just happened in that little transition? It turned into a word problem that was projected on the screen. She moved from whole numbers to fractions, right? And then she switched into cooperative groups, just like that.
I'm seeing a gradual release. It's a gradual release.
One minute.
So as I'm going around from group to group, you're going to notice they're doing it differently. Some are having more success than others.
Alright, I'm noticing that some of you are trying to jump to the answer. I'm not asking for the answer yet, I'm asking you to show how to model six groups of one-half. Look what we did up here. The first one was six groups of two. You all did that beautifully, without any error. And I told you it was going to be the same thing, I was going to draw a fraction at you. So who can tell me what six groups of one-half is now going to look like? Lucas?
I know what it's going to look like when you also put, like, make six groups of one-half, and I, not this, but, but we're not onto the answer yet.
Right. So, I can use this circle pattern right here. What can I do, Lucas, to show six groups of one-half?
So, I saw when they, when I, groups of-
What can I do about it?
Sometimes I see this part, but, I made the pattern, but I also add, like, two holes, like that.
Okay, well, I might try to do two holes. What can I do in my picture right here to model six groups of one-half?
Draw a non- grouped fraction.
Alright, or what can I put into this circle? Instead of two, what can I put?
One.
One half. There you go, what answers they allow?
One half.
One half. It's just like having the whole number there. I am creating six groups of one-half. My, now all of a sudden our brains just close, because we drew in a fraction. But is this the same as with that whole number? Yes. We just now have six one-halves. Now, hmm, how can I draw a number line now to represent six groups of one-half? Of course, my number line numbers are going to change. How can I represent six groups of one-half on my number line? Do I need help?
Um, you can, um, you can, uh, you can, uh, you can, uh, count, what, you can count by one?
Okay.
Like, um, you just do one, and then one and a half, and then two, and then two and a half.
Wow! Wow, you're getting good.
Ah!
Alright, well, what was on, what was on, it's like zero and one?
Alright, so that was ten minutes. You saw right near the end, those oohs and ahs started, huh? Want to tell you guys something about this video. I took it last week unannounced. Those kids didn't even know who I was. I called up Theresa McGee, and I said, "Theresa, I need to make a video. You got anybody up there that's, can come in and wouldn't mind me doing, you know, make sure all the children have the release forms, so that we could video record it?" She goes, "Yes, sure, come on up, I got somebody that we can find." This is after lunch, in the afternoon, right, you know? I went right in, I asked the children and the teacher if it'd be okay if I videotaped them, they were super excited. And that was the first take, right there, okay? So that, in my opinion, is very authentic, and, you know, true representation of what we see in a lot of our high schools, I mean, in a lot of our schools. And I'll say that, you know, I'm very proud of the work that that teacher did. I didn't choose this, though, because it was such a great lesson, even though it was, or because the teacher was doing a phenomenal job, which she did, or that the children were so engaged, but they were. I just, you know, I did this because I wanted to have a video to use to try to teach you guys a little bit about the tool. But, you know, there we have it. So tell me a little bit about what you saw. And I know that we're past four o'clock, so I don't want to spend too much time, but is there anything that jumps out at you, based on these look-for's, that you thought was particularly noteworthy? Or anything that you found that was easy to spot?
How did she know the students were doing, all the students were doing it well, when she stayed pretty much at the front of the classroom?
Good question. Did you notice what they were all writing on, though? Those little mini whiteboards? Couple of times, they were all turning them and holding them up, so she could see. That actually is something that we've tried really hard to push out in our, in our schools, is a way for, to see overtly what responses students are giving, rather than, "Does anyone know the answer?" and everybody, you know, or you just call out, "Oh, Bill, what's the answer?" No, everybody show your board. That way you get, a teacher can do a quick scan and see who's engaged, who's participating, who's not. One reason for those. What else?
As best I could tell, they were all engaged.
Mm-hmm, yeah, absolutely. And that engagement is question number six. And one of the things that we talk about when we're looking for engagement, is the teacher doing all the work? Or are the students also, you know, carrying that cognitive load? Are they following, are they participating, are they questioning, are they providing answers, are they showing their work? And I would, I would agree with you, Ms. Williams. Anybody else?
Well, the other thing that I recognize is when she did, when she asked them to get in groups, and it was interesting how they were having conversations and looking at each other, and that way, you know, you can, you know, get that perspective of one doing it one way, one doing it, you know, but they're both having it right.
Absolutely.
Putting them in groups and letting them look at each other and discuss was, I think, was great.
Yep, I would say that's under number five, where the learners' discussions and dialogues and exchanges with each other, and the teacher predominate.
Yes.
It's not just the teacher talking the entire time. You know, the old Charlie Brown cartoon, where it's wah-wah-wah. The children, you hear them talking, you hear them, you know, engage with each other, she's back and forth with them all.
I think to piggyback on that activity was, you didn't see mass chaos when she told them to do that. So, A, they were used to it, but B, I mean, they moved straight into it and got to the learner part of it.
Yeah, and that goes down to number nine. Learners demonstrate knowledge of, and/or follow, classroom rules and behavioral expectations, and work well with others. And then, number ten, which is similar but different. Learners use class time purposefully, with minimal wasted time or disruptions. Okay, so yes, they're following the rules, and they get along, but are they using their time well? And is the pace, you know, is it moving along? Or is there just sort of this lapse? Yes, they're compliant, but there just seems to be kind of free time or wasted time. I would say neither is the case here.
I like the way she, as they moved more to the student group work, that gradual release. When she was at the board, she kind of took an abstract concept, like when you build fractions. And then when she was doing the number line with the skips and everything, she took something abstract and made a vision. But that really would help different learners kind of connect to it.
Yep, I would definitely agree. I see that hitting on a couple of these. Number four is about- Uh, number four is about rigor, okay? Rigor doesn't mean something, it just means that it's, that it's more difficult necessarily or more complicated. What rigor is talking about is, you know, yes, I can recall a fact to you. I can, I can give you, I can regurgitate something back at you. But can you take that information and apply it, evaluate it, or maybe, you know, somehow make a prediction out of it? And so I think you're right, Dr. McKnight. When you switched, and those are fourth graders, okay? When you switch from those whole numbers right over to the, you know, fractions, it was a hold up a second. You know, my, even me, I'm like, a lot of adults have that issue too, you know? You start talking about fractions and percentages, it gives people a little hesitation, so. And yet, many of them, you saw, didn't miss a beat. And they also represent, some of them represented their, their six groups of one half differently.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was interested when, when the little guy said one, one and a half, two, you know, it was going that way. I said, hmm, yeah, okay, I thought it that way.
Yep.
Yeah. That's what he was saying, you're right.
Next month's work session, you'll teach us some math skills, right?
Just putting the signs on that. All right, so, um, any, anybody else like to add anything else about this particular item?
I think it's good to see it in use. We, we've heard about it.
Now, is it used more than usual?
We've heard about it for a year or so now, but to see how it actually works and that it is holding us accountable for what we're expecting.
Are the teachers pretty receptive to it? Has that been, any issues with that?
I would say so. Um, we've gotten a lot of really good feedback. One of the things that happens is that when you do this, you enter it and then you hit submit, it sends an email immediately to the teacher. So in their inbox, they have what I did for them immediately. The principal can also go to the dashboard. Now, that's, this is just a, a high-level shot of the dashboard for the district. But the principal can go in and filter it and sort it and look, well, how, how is the data looking just for all fourth grade? Or how's it looking for, you know, this time of, of day? You know, you can filter it by when these occur. Um, and then you can look, you see those numbers right there? Those are the numeric representations of the score that we gave it. Remember in my slide deck, very evident is a three. Evident is a two. Remember I said two or evident is the standard? So you can see areas where we are sort of struggling. So after 3,300 of these snapshots that have been done, these are the averages district-wide. And again, I can, I can drill down more into that. I can see that, I can compare my, my own ratings that I give to those that Bill does to see, wow, Bill, are you giving everybody threes and I'm giving everybody zeros? You know, we can kinda calibrate, we can see if there's correlations. Lots of different ways to look at it.
So that, that's interesting, because that's what I was thinking just a few minutes ago about the calibration piece. Because I really liked doing the video and being able to go through, but do you do this with the, with your principals? Do they get a chance to kinda sit down and kinda calibrate so that my three and your one aren't so different or something like that?
Yes, um, we, we always need to do more of that. But in the beginning, me and, and the team, we went around and we did them with the principals. Okay? And we did as few where we didn't even score them, we just were practicing and talking about it. We didn't hit submit. Um, and then, um, when we have our grade level meetings, so every month we have our elementary meetings with our principals, and then we have our secondary meetings. Well, we, we had to switch to virtual for those meetings during the winter because COVID kinda took a turn, right? But when we have those in, in person, we take turns having them at a different school. And we split each other up and we all go in groups and do walkthroughs together. And before we hit the submit button, we come out in the hallway and we say, okay, what'd you get for this one? What'd you get for that one? And we try to make sure that no one is more than one of those apart. Like, it, it's probably okay if I, if my opinion is that that was, that was evident, that was evident. But Bill's like, mm, I don't know, I, I saw this and that and the other. I'm gonna give it a, I'm gonna give it a somewhat evident. Well, that's okay, we're only one of these off. But if, like you said, if I'm giving it a four and he's giving it a zero, that's not good, you know?
Right. It's a good activity.
One of my goals, I'd like to try to pilot for the end of this year, is to have teachers doing walkthroughs of other teachers. I think that'll be powerful. Um, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but it's a goal, we'd like to try it.
It is. It's, it's funny you said that, because I did a training in Tennessee one time and I was talking to some principals about this very thing. And that was the next level in their evolution. If they went from the principals doing it with their APs, so they moved into teachers started to do it. He said that made a big difference in the building. Because now teachers could actually talk to each others during their professional learning time and give each other's feed, feedback on this is what I'm seeing, or this is where I am and this is where you are. And that, that was huge.
I had had a conversation with a teacher not too long ago that on their teacher workday, some of the assistants went around to different classrooms to see how this grade level was doing it versus this and that collaborative effort. And I think it'd be amazing to see our teachers get to that point.
Yeah.
Being able just to release a teacher, to see other teachers on their same grade levels. Because a lot of times you don't get to see how another teacher's doing reading, because I'm doing reading at the same time. But every now and then, if you kinda give them that release, I used to call it having a little field trip right there in the building. That just opened their eyes, because they can steal good ideas while they pick up little things.
Preachers watch other preachers, so.
Anyway, I thought this was good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McLean.
All right, thank you all. I just, real quick, I wanted you to see, this is, this is the current dashboard. So I took that screenshot on Friday, and then this is just right now, this is active. So we added another 40 or so walkthroughs just today. So our principals are doing a wonderful job with this. And I just wanna thank the teachers for all their hard work, for those that are listening or watching this streaming. I mean, you know, they continue to be, um, just champions for these kids and do such an amazing job. And I wanna thank Ms. Julie Cook for letting me come into her class and all those fourth graders, uh, for letting me come and video them. And I look forward to taking their treats by this week as a little thank you, so. We can all give a shout out to the fourth grader that still want for that. Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our last item of business would be, uh, field trips, chaperones and volunteers. Board members, this was added to the agenda, uh, basically for us to go back and just kinda have that discussion around now that we have modified our other, um, requirements. We wanna make sure that you, uh, what your thoughts are about this one. And so, Dr. McLean, I turn it to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lauren Curtis is gonna walk us through this. As always, we bring recommendations in life for health and safety. She's gonna walk us through this that surfaced as the result of some emails that came away, said Ms. Lauren Curtis.
Good afternoon, everyone, it's good to see you as always. Um, we're gonna share three slides with you regarding field trips and, and chaperones for, uh, for both overnight field trips, um, daytime field trips, and then volunteers within our schools. So the first is field trips, and these are field trips that are not overnight. Um, some of this is stuff that has nothing to do with COVID. This is just our general operational perfe, procedure. Um, so, uh, all of our field trips have to be approved by Mr. Graham, our Executive Director of Operations. But we, and there are lots of requirements that go along with our board policy related to field trips in general. But these were the additional guidelines that were replaced on field trips, um, with some COVID safety mitigation measures. So, um, first, students and staff must follow our guidelines for distancing and masking unless the restrictions for the local area facility being visited are more restrictive than our guidelines, in which case they should follow the local or facility guidelines. Um, second, maintaining two people per seat on a bus and turning in a seating chart to the school office. And then asking that field trip chaperones provide proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test from within the last 72 hours prior to the trips. The recommendation to the board this afternoon is to continue those existing guidelines. Do, uh, Mr. Richardson, do you wanna take these one at a time, or do you want me to go through all three?
Why don't you go through all three?
Okay. So next slide. So the next is for overnight field trips. This is one that you, um, changed recently to allow for overnight field trips to be taken by small groups for the purpose of academic competition or special recognition. All students and staff going on these overnight field trips must have a negative COVID test 48 hours prior to the trip. And just as with all of our other field trips, um, these requests are, are reviewed by Mr. Graham and approved by him. And our recommendation is to continue those existing guidelines. And then finally, for volunteers, volunteers are permitted in Grahamville County Public Schools. Our existing procedures that have been in place for a long time require volunteers to fill out an application and undergo a criminal background check. However, at this time, you've, uh, approved that volunteers should provide proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test result from within the last 72 hours prior to volunteering. So the recommendation this afternoon is also to continue these guidelines.
Board members, this comes to you as Superintendent had spoken about. We had received several emails from parents, volunteers, community members asking us to reconsider our stance on this since we have changed our other protocols. And so this comes to you today either potentially for action or for you to follow the recommendation of continuing the existing guidelines. Would you like to add anything, Madam Superintendent?
No, sir, just as it is.
Okay.
As it is.
All right, so board members, what questions do you have or comments, Ms. Williams?
Um, if a teacher is serving as a chaperone on a field trip, would they fall under this guideline as to having vaccination status or a negative COVID test?
So for overnight field trips?
They would.
They would. Yes, ma'am, for regular ones, they're with our students every day already, so no, ma'am. For overnight, we, uh, did feel, because students and staff and parents would be unmasked and frequently sharing, you know, in very close contact, sharing a bed and, because they're in hotel rooms, that it was important that everyone be screened prior to those trips.
Ms. Chair. Uh, Lauren, what do we get into when towards the end of the year there are classrooms that go somewhere? Or I know at West Oxford, uh, historically, an entire grade goes to the, to the coast and that kind of thing, uh, given the small group, small group scenario. How would that, and Bill, how would we do something like that given our current guidelines?
Well, currently that, are you talking about an overnight field trip?
Mm-hmm, right.
So currently, the board has only approved to allow for overnight field trips for small groups for academic, uh, competition or special recognition.
That's, that's exactly what, what I'm asking. So those would automatically be?
Not allowed.
Right.
At this, this time, those are not permitted.
That's correct.
I, I would say at this late date, it's likely impossible for some of those larger trips to take place this year.
I'm sure the teachers probably know that I'm, know that. Good, thank you.
Yep.
Other comments or?
With, with the, uh, field trips, not the overnight ones, but the second bullet on the bus, two people per seat would be permitted. How does that align with, I guess, current transportation?
Currently, we, we try to maintain two people per seat during the regular school day, but in many cases, there are three students per seat, depending on the size of the bus or the number of students assigned to that route. We try to, in best-case scenario, have two per seat and, if possible, have those two people be from the same household. That is not always what happens, but that is our, our goal.
On the one with volunteers?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, trying to get this kinda straight in my mind.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a teacher assistant, say, in a kindergarten class does not have to have vaccination status or COVID test at this point, is that correct?
You, you, last, at the last board meeting, you, you, the board removed the screening testing for staff that were unvaccinated or chose not to disclose their vaccination status. That is correct.
Lauren?
And on the volunteer one, about providing the proof of vaccination, is that provided to the principal? Or do we have some central location for collecting this information?
Just to the principal.
Can you speak to kind of the amount or how much inform? How many people have come back and asked about this?
Not many at all, since you all acted on this, we've only had a couple.
If I'm a volunteer and I'm going in, uh, once a week, do I do this every week?
So, uh, according to this, well, I guess your proof of vaccination would stay on file.
Would be fine, but.
Your vaccine, your, uh, COVID test, yes, ma'am.
Dr. McLean and I spoke about this last week, and, um, we are happy to allow, uh, those volunteers that come in every week to register for our screening testing and participate. That way to make it easier for those folks.
But they would still need to do that prior to them coming?
If they're participating every week, then I, I think that, to me, that would satisfy the, the board's current guidelines.
And the word or is there as well, the proof of vaccination or?
Or. All right. So would the board like to take action, or do you want to leave it as it is for now?
Do we need to do, what, what do you recommend?
Well, the staff is recommending that we leave it the way it is for now.
That's good.
Do you have any?
Based on what you've heard us say this evening?
As far, any concerns?
Any concern on our end?
No.
Is it rare for a volunteer to come in every day, or is that just?
We have heard from a couple that have talked about at least being in there once a week, maybe a couple of times a week.
So if they came on a Tuesday, Thursday, you wouldn't have to have a test on the Wednesday to go back to Thursday to get that week?
Sounds like if they're in that cohort of testing, then they satisfy that.
I, I feel like that would satisfy the boards.
Okay. All right. If I'm not seeing any kind of action, then we leave it the way it is? All right? Sounds good, thank you, Ms. Curtis.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Superintendent, do you have anything further?
No, sir, nothing more this evening.
Board members, do you have anything further?
Thanks for doing this. Uh, it's so nice to be able to have the time just to, you know, kinda talk about these issues. Thanks for doing it.
Yes, may I? Yes, board members, one more thing. In your folder, you have some information about your habit, specific to your habit on Friday. This is what I was referencing at the beginning. You will present about six times for about four minutes. The children are in groups, and it's almost like a speed dating. And you won't have to move, the children will do the moving. So you will stay put and they will move to come to you.
Are the kids, they're from middle school and high school, will there be a mix of middle and high school in the same group? Or will they be separated?
Did we decide to mix the group? I believe they will be mixed. Yes, ma'am, they will be mixed. And so you do not have to feel obligated to use this. We, um, found this in a workbook. This, the youngsters have the book coming and you have a book, but this is part of workbook material. Just if you wanted to get a jump start, we thought we'd make some materials available just in case. But you certainly don't have to use those materials.
And, and what is the level of, uh, technology available to us at this?
Our tech team will be there, but I won't have specific technology for each individual group.
Okay.
So if we need to make copies for you, if you could get them to us the day before, that would be awesome.
Okay.
How many children are involved? How many children will be coming?
There are 18 students.
Oh, okay.
18 students, great questions. It would be nice, what time do we say for board members? They present at nine on the dot, so it would be great if they could be there no later than 8:45. 8:45. The basement of the chapel at the Masonic Home for Children. Basement of the chapel.
I'm sure it'll be identified, a balloon of science.
You know us very well. Any other questions?
Dr. McLean, um, I know that even though we did not change our status with the field trip volunteer situation, can we ask Dr. Winborn to make sure that we put something out?
Sure.
We did consider, and here's the options as far as testing?
Certainly.
That way we're not?
And Dr. Winborn, in that announcement, let's be sure to indicate the word or, proof of vaccination or as well. I think people will find that helpful as well.
If there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
I have a motion by Dr. McKnight and a second by Mr. Peace, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, we're adjourned.